Good evening, everybody. Welcome. As a preliminary matter, this is, I'm Mike Stevens. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris?
Yes.
Yep, and Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. And, okay, so, good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom and in-person. Speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. And the chair may allow for the public to provide a comment. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comments, the board may, if they are able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For Board Docs, supported meetings, all of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless the chair notes otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair may afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford a number of minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. There we go, thank you. And this is my first shot at being the chair here, so I appreciate patience where needed, and I may need to call on help from others. So now we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
At this time, we move to public comments. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. So, first of all, in the room, is there anybody in the room who has comments at this time? No? Online remotely, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment at this time? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. I will move to approve, excuse me, the consent agenda items A through D as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures.
I will second it.
Thank you. And I will do a roll call. Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next on the agenda, we have a full-time police officer appointment, Mr. Joseph Noonan. Introduced by Chief Noble.
Good evening. It's the first time we've been over here. July meetings. I made a, for that Joseph Noonan for appointment as a full-time police officer. Joseph, his resume came through like when we were asking for resumes for the open position. And he stood up because he had just recently graduated the police academy. He had put himself through the police academy again, which is one of those things we like to see because it shows the initiative, not just, you know, we didn't get paid, we'd be actively active. Went to Quinn-Sigman Community College Academy, which is one of the ones that we actually do it because they have a high rate of failure because they push the students back into the field. In the police work. Joe was excited when he saw that Mainer was hiring because he knows Mainer from used to be a delivery driver. And his dad owned the barber shop in Littleton, so we made it from his time helping his dad out at the barber shop. So, he did excellent on the interview, and it showed that he, you can tell that he has a great work ethic. We heard from several people in an area that we know and trust that said his work ethic was second to none. So, we look forward to him joining, and again, because I'm one of those full-time police officers.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not so much question for me, but just impressed by what I see, that you're clearly a self-motivated person, and that's impressive. And I'm sure that's sometimes, sometimes I know you've got to follow orders, and sometimes you've got to show initiative, and sometimes the balance is difficult, but definitely welcome you to the town. Thank you for joining. Any other comments?
No, I echo your comments. Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Once we approve it, which I'm sure we will, forward to seeing you around and getting to know you a little bit. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I had, I had the opportunity to meet, you know, with Chief Noble and Joe in Chief's office, and, you know, so definitely give him my endorsement as, you know, a select board member, and have the feeling that he'll be a great fit for the town of Maynard based on, you know, Mike's comments and just the interview alone and some of the conversation we had. So, look forward to having Joe onboard. And if you don't mind, I'll read the motion, Mike.
Go for it.
Move to appoint Joseph Noonan as a full-time police officer for an indefinite term, starting July 17, 2024, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved. And move to appoint Joseph Noonan as a local licensing authority agent with a term expiring June 30, 2025, also authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
I will second both motions. We should take two rolls.
Right, okay. And before we take the roll, Lindsay, is there anything you wanted to add at this point?
No, just happy to hear all of these great accolades, accolades, and welcome to Maynard.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will do a roll call for the first motion. Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And on the second motion, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
It's only tomorrow about 11:00 AM.
Good luck.
Okay, that's good luck. Thank you for coming, Joe.
Thank you.
When you see an odd guy waving at you as you drive by in the cruiser, you know.
Moving on to the next item, election workers. Something that we all, I'm sure, appreciate is very important. Before we do the motion, does anybody have any questions or comments about this?
I'll just note, like, this is, this is a regular. And she did a fantastic memo describing what the recommended action of the board is. It's 25 appointees. I can't say, I wouldn't be able to say enough about the difference, kind of like, we're very dependent on them, and I have found others to be I don't know, top-notch, they're the best, reliable, consistent.
Excellent. Anybody else? Any questions or comments? All right, so we have a motion.
Move to appoint the list of election workers as shown for all elections from August 15, 2024 to August 15, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, too. Thank you. The next item is the appointment of a new member of the Capitol Planning Committee, Mr. Michael Lanza, who I think I saw his name up on the screen. Yeah, there he is. Welcome, Michael. Thank you for making this commitment. Do you have, would you like to introduce yourself a little bit? You know, just a couple of minutes, just to explain who you are and why you're taking on this responsibility? What we'd like.
Thank you, and I promise I'm not in the witness protection program. It's just the lighting in the room. I'm a new resident to the town. I've been here for about a year. Moved here from Belmont, purchased my first home. Really excited to be part of this community. I work for ClearGo, which is based out of the mill downtown. So I'm very much into helping local governments work as best as they can, and I'm looking forward to being a useful member of this Capitol Planning Commission. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, just a comment. Welcome to Maynard. Thank you for your willingness to contribute as a volunteer to the community, and welcome aboard the team.
Thank you.
And I'll add the same. Michael, I was on the Capitol Planning Committee until June 30 of this year and moved to this position, and I was on the Capitol Planning Committee for a couple of years. It's a really, really great committee, and it's a fantastic way to learn about Maynard. So I'm really happy to see that you're there, and ClearGo has been an outstanding tool for getting that information organized and really moving the needle for Capcom. So, thank you for stepping forward and for volunteering, and enjoy. That's a, it's a really great committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Michael Lanza to the Capitol Planning Committee with term expiring June 30, 2025, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Thank you. And with a roll call here, Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you, Michael. I think you're going to be getting straight to work next week. We have a couple of weeks from now, we have, yes, two weeks, we have a quad board meeting, so I look forward to seeing you there.
Likewise, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, use of town property for the Maynard Public Library Memorial Park's Amazing Animal Ambassadors. Let's hope they don't get put off by any heat. Jean, I think I saw you there. Yes, all right, Jean, would you like to?
I'm here.
Yeah, hello, Jean.
Hello.
Just tell us briefly a little bit more about this program?
Yes, absolutely. So this is part of our summer reading program of events. And most summers, Mr. Mark, our children's librarian, brings an animal program. Different animals every summer, uses different presenters every summer, and the kids get to learn about these animals. This year, it's the Amazing Animal Ambassadors from Cape Cod. And it's being funded generously through a grant from the Discovery Museum. And, you know, we'll expect about, maybe about 50 attendees at the program. And we've held it in the park before, a couple of times before.
Hey. Well, that sounds exciting. I think I might set aside that date myself.
Yeah, oh, it's great.
Yeah.
There'll be, I think there's going to be a fox, and I forget all the, is it going to be at least a half dozen different animals?
My question was answered in the motion, but there is a, there is a time that's given 10 to 12. Yeah, I look forward to it. I won't be there unfortunately because I've got to work, but I would recommend that in the future for this particular event that we just put it on the consent agenda. No need to bring staff members in for a recurring event.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the use of Memorial Park by the Maynard Public Library for the Amazing Animal Ambassadors event on Wednesday, July 31, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. And the roll call, Chris?
Yes.
And Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you, Jean.
All right, thank you all. And I hope to see, hope to see all of you at the summer concert this Saturday, 2 o'clock, Memorial Park.
Very impressed with, with all that you guys have contributed to the town. Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Item number seven on the agenda, contracts. Do we have any discussion about the Greenwood Emergency Vehicles?
I need to listen to context. Because it hasn't been a couple of years since, this is not the first time we've actually seen nearly that. So, Chief Paul is on vacation, but she did the hard work and diligence to find this particular contract. We really want to immerse vehicles now this is through the state checklist, so it makes things much more streamlined. This has been appropriated already in the leasing obligations at town meeting. And then this, the actual execution of that, of that vote. And then it's paid for from ambulance, which was part of the incorporation at town meeting. So this is a lengthy process. Takes a couple of years before the ambulance entity closes up. It's really just gets the ball. So the contract is for $450,000. However, you don't pay that all at once, and she's, now, she points out the heading. So, yeah, so it's relatively bulletproof. It's just sort of keeping the ball rolling together.
Did the article that we approved at town meeting include the entirety, or is it just yearly? So that we have to then do that for the next four years to get?
So that's a good question. It's two articles. One is to start the leasing, and then the other article is just the annual appropriation of proceeds. And then within that, it does point out, because I wrote the article, but it says something to the effect of like, you know, we're paying the, it's like the X number of five payments for this, X number.
Okay, so each?
And the first payment for the noon.
Okay, got it. And is this an additional or is it replacement?
Let me double check.
I think it's a replacement because of trade-in value of $8,000.
I'm not sure if we have, if we have a second one already.
It is, so Chief's balance says, the 2013 apparatus, the holding, will be traded in to offset the cost of the replacement.
So it's just a new one to replace. We don't have a redundant. I know there was a discussion at one point about keeping one of them and?
That is ideal, actually. There is, so we, so the 2013 one will be replaced, but we'll have one other one. The current pipeline ambulance, first day of 2021, will go into reserve for the new ambulance for some, so we'll have to.
Do we have a garage space for that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we had to build it.
That was all part of the discussion, the building was being built, discussion about having enough room to have two ambulances.
We, they get some bodies.
Right. All right, Chris or Lindsay, any questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the contract with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC for the purchase of an ambulance in the amount of $450,954, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. And with the roll call, let's go with Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you. And it's my understanding that the, the next item for contracts is being postponed.
Yes, but all the same, because I only, I only text you. So, this afternoon, I was informed by no, maybe it is. Anyway, so municipal services, Executive Director Steve Silverstein may be on, but anyway, he let me know, he's been working with town council and with the applicant for, you know, Rivers National Healing, for this post-meeting agreement, which is kind of a contract between the community and the applicant to, for, and this, that, that town council feels like this is not yet ready for the that the post-meeting agreement is to better reflect current policies, laws, and that they don't recommend that this version that has been upgraded before that. And so Steve Silverstein contacted the applicant, explained it to them. My understanding is they're accepting of that, they think they're, they weren't up for emergency. And I think that's probably the best perspective. Council says, like, if you prove it, we have to change it later and adapt. Like, I would like, it's more straightforward to try to, at least try to capture the most updated policies in the state. That way it's not projected, when it goes to camps, your patrol mission. That all being said, and that is my, that's my recommendation.
I think.
My understanding is from the headlines, the, the rules are, so probably be the first of many sort of like attempts at this post-meeting agreement, and then when it's time to negotiate with the other establishments. I bet that was community experience, very involved. But that is, I don't recommend any actual people. And I don't think Steve's honestly, I, I don't, if you weren't going to do anything, you didn't.
Right. Any other questions on this? All right, thank you very much. The next item, number nine, is the proclamation for
Mr. Acting Chair, Green Meadow School?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Beg your pardon. There we go. Yes. I turned over the wrong page. There we go. Thank you. All right, Green Meadow School. So, yes, we have a motion to approve contract for early site packaging services. Just one thing, I was present at at least most of the last couple of meetings, and I just want to highlight the, again, the amount of work that some of our members, on this occasion in particular, Josh Morse, who has been doing incredibly thorough job of reviewing the, the design details, asking questions and engaging in discussion, and, and just, it's, it's really helpful to see, see that taking place. So, thank you, Josh. And are there any other comments or questions on?
To give a little more context, and I appreciate that, because I agree, some more in particular. I'll, I'll mostly, number of is that, that particular meeting, we did a lot of. We are joined this evening by members of the Green Meadow School project team, which includes our project managers, which is Colliers International, I can see Trey Brady.
All right.
Yeah, well, yeah, and then I also see, it's all really small for me, guys, and then I can see, oh, I see Chris from Mount Vernon Group. So Chris Levant is, is our designers. Surprisingly, we're not joined by Phil Lumbo with Colliers, but I think we're a good hint. And, and I thought it was a good review that this team put together for the Green Meadow School. It's for these two, and they'll do a better documentary than I am. But we're, now we're really getting into it, because now we're starting a contract and, and like the early site package in particular. That's, that's where you need to see a lot of work in. And, and we even got into this particular vendor, and I apologize if I'm seeing your fire, gentlemen, but it was really important to the Green Meadow School Committee to make sure that this vendor had the experience to be able to, and because of the sensitivities, they were going to be building a new school next to, to a current, you know, in operations school. And, and this, this contractor needs to be familiar with that, respect the boundaries, and as I said, the sensitivities when we're doing site demonstrations and otherwise. Whether new school or this, I'm sorry, with the current school, we still need intact, so we need to. So that was good. And the material testing is, is inspections, that's really important, too. As you, especially in a project this scale, really, it's, my understanding is it's important to have that third party really give that oversight, you need to make sure that the quality. Okay, so, but if I miss something or I got anything wrong, gentlemen? Now it's your turn.
No, Greg, I think you, you got it, you got it pretty well buttoned up there.
All right.
Excellent. All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on this matter?
I assume you guys have experience working with Northern Construction Service?
We do not, but with the recommendations that we got and the reference checks that we performed, we feel adamant that they can perform this at a very high level. Again, just some of the references we got, they, we put out a essentially a survey for them from five to one, five being best, one being worse. And they averaged 4.6 across the board, so we're confident that they'll be able to perform this work. They came with really high references. Their safety, workers' compensation modifier averages 0.71, fantastic number. And again, through the recommendations, we feel comfortable that they will be able to perform this work at a very safe and effective manner.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Do we have a motion for the, the first item, the early site package low bidder?
Come on, somebody else.
I will move to approve the contract for early site package services related to the Green Meadow School Building Project by Northern Construction Services LLC in the amount of $4,995,208.71, as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Thank you. And with the roll call, Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm a yes. And the second item, the material testing and inspections, we have a motion, please?
I will move to approve the contract for material testing and inspections related to the Green Meadow School Building Project by UTS of Massachusetts, Inc., in the amount of $102,125, as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Thank you. And roll call, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thank you very much. And I know I highlighted the work of one gentleman earlier, but please don't think that I dismiss everybody else's contributions as well. I know that's a lot of work goes into this, and it's, it's much appreciated. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And moving, now we can get to item number nine, which is the, for Marie Miranda's retirement. I know that sadly she's unable to be present today, so my question is whether or not we want to postpone this until she and perhaps her family can be present.
That's very, that's a good question. I would recommend the board still does the motion. That way, Andy, you're similar.
Right.
We'll invite her, and if she doesn't come, that's okay. We'll still get her to the front.
Right.
But I recommend the board still take the session.
Okay, all right.
That's a good question, and, and I, I very much appreciate that. Maybe she would have been present, but you're right, she's right, not able to.
Exactly, yeah. All right, well, it's always a celebration for somebody who's, okay, it's 31 years of public service, so that's, that's impressive. Thank you. All right, so do we have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve a proclamation honoring Marie Miranda for her 31 years of public service, including 16 years for the people of Maynard, in recognition of her retirement, as presented, authorizing use of. In recognition of her retirement as presented, authorizing new digital signatures.
Second. Thank you.
Before we actually vote on this, I'd like to just uh. Recognize, I've known Marie since I began um in my role. I think she started here right around the time, if not shortly before, shortly after. I became uh my first year as a member of the select board. Um, and she has always been a wonderful woman to work with, very so kind, friendly. And um, you know, at one point she worked for the uh for the planning board, if I remember directly. And um, always helpful there, always involved in, you know, doing the difficult work for the planning board secretary, if you want to call it that, but she did a lot more than. Secretarial stuff. During, es- especially during the period of time, it was a difficult period for the town of Maynard in many ways. Relative to our uh development in town. Um, and I think she should be recognized for that. And then when she moved on to the DPW, I know she continued to work uh with public. Quite a bit. And um. It's not easy working in that office when uh it it got water leaks and you got water problems with your bill and you've got. Uh, trash trash trucks that don't show up and you know, all sorts of things beyond the regular work that she's doing. But I want to wish Marie the best. I last saw her a couple of weeks ago in the hallway when I was here visiting during the day and. Always, as always, smile on her face. And she said the time was coming, but didn't want to tell me the date. And now we have it. So. Uh, congratulations to.
Thank you. So do we have a motion? Did we read that already?
I think I read.
No. Second.
I think I read it, but I think you read it again happen.
Very. The the motion. It worked, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just need the roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Um, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes, and David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item number ten, uh, starting with the FY twenty-four end-of-year transfers. Uh, Greg, do you have some comments on this?
So this is the this is the regular procedure done by all of these. Um, the Division of Local Services of the Department of Government allows, urges, provides for new staff to do transfers. Throughout the year, particularly at the end of this year. Um, and it's in order to sort of balance the budget. So at the end of this year. All all departments, you have some under spends, some just the the fifty-some million dollar budget. And so the county council office does a great job capturing those highs and lows than uh reporting it in the in what's been provided to the board. Um, as I looked at this, as provided by the town council office, none of them were surprised. Um, throughout the course of the like the fiscal year, you're never really sure where you're going then. Inevitably, some are more expensive and and sort of uh. More weightier operations than others, IT, unemployment. Council fees, I mean, I mean, attorney fees. And you don't know, throughout the course of this year, you might just have emergencies come up or a certain test. And I think the town council's uh job, I think the town council did a wonderful, Kevin Beach did a wonderful job of giving a brief description next to all of these. Um, uh, the board's actually, hopefully, um, will be followed up by the finance committee's action scheduled for Monday. The finance committee also will review this technically to approve, and then we'll be able to close out, really just one more step towards closing out. FY twenty-four, but I also see that at the top of the um attachment in board docs. But it does say FY twenty-four, which I think is just a sort of like a ghost stamp um in the Excel file that. They've probably been using since two thousand eighteen, so. But but that's that's not accurate. The rest of the 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 actual balances, you see, that is. So um I haven't answered any questions that the board has.
Do you know, this is probably kind of an odd question, do you know why there was one less week of early voting?
Uh, off the top of my head? No, don't remember. I don't remember. I'm gonna look it up.
I don't know, was scheduling of the date or?
Yeah. I don't know. Or maybe it was one less week. So I mean, it depends, you know, every fiscal year, maybe maybe we are like pre-budgeted in expectation of how many like uh elections based on their year or, because I don't recall. No, so I was gonna say, if the if Dyer is town clerk, and if maybe when she came on, you just assumed the 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 budget of the court for her, and that clerk had just served over the election. But I think that's basically, she's been here for two years, and I think this is, that's.
It's not a big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the rationale. It might have been.
Okay. Chris or Lindsay, any further questions?
No, I'm good.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion?
We'll move to approve the end-of-year transfers for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as presented.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. And the roll call, Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is uh joint meeting planning. So there's no. Motion here. It's about providing direction in consideration of the proposed joint meeting scheduled for July thirtieth. Of this year, just a couple of weeks away from now. And this is a meeting that we. Uh, at the last meeting, a month or so ago, that that we collectively agreed would be a good idea. So. Um, it seems that it would perhaps be helpful just to have at least a short discussion at this point to. Um, consider what kind of direction is needed, uh, what kind of actions, if any, we need to take. For example, um, any further communications we want to have with the other boards. In setting um what I hope will be a very clear. Um, purpose and set of um desired outcomes from the meeting. And uh trying to keep it um as concise and as clear as possible. Um, so, uh, I think if we can allow ourselves five or ten minutes discussion today, that will at least start this. And then when Jeff. Uh, returns, he will be in a position to be able to take take these and uh modify accordingly.
You can probably also use a few minutes of our meeting next week when we're talking about our objectives, because. Part of the objectives, probably, in my eyes, will be um. Uh, reflective of what comes of this meeting. And so therefore, the objectives meeting becomes important to be able to establish what we want to happen at that. But anyway, well. I'm hopeful that this joint meeting is going to be a a discussion on priorities. Long-term priorities. Planning, uh, literally planning for our long-term priorities and assuring that. We are not whacking the maul by going after the first available. Whatever project is ready, quote unquote, gets the gets the thumbs up, but rather. What fits into our long-term plan so that we can actually have a fiscally responsible plan. For the long-term outlook and success of the community overall. Uh, whether it be. Capital projects. Or operating budgets, or any other item that might come up that is a priority for this community. And not just going for, well, we're ready to go, so let's let's ask for an override. Which is not no way to run business.
Chris or Lindsay, any questions or comments at this time?
Uh, I only comment, I I agree with David, and I think um if, you know. Wha- what what I would love to see for the meeting is for. For us to have a very clear agenda so that everybody understands what the desired outcomes are from the meeting. And how to get there collectively. And I think what I heard in the last meeting was that people wanted to have more discussion, David, as you pointed out, about priorities. Um, some of that being, you know, the priorities that came up from the capital planning presentation, but I think that there's. It's probably going to be hard to have that conversation without talking about budgets also. Um, but I do think if we are going to ask, um. You know, like if we if we want everyone to be working from the same, like foundational knowledge and context. Then we might want to ask capital planning to come with a little bit more information about the projects that they know are in the queue. Um, so you'll recall that there are the, I think, three or four projects that require debt issuance, the senior center, the bleachers, the DPW garage. I think there's one more, not looking at the presentations, I can't remember. And then there's the full list of. Things that um typically come out of the general fund that the Capcom has already gone through the process of prioritizing. So I don't, I'm not sure to what level we want to get into that, but that informs a lot of like how free cash is used, which projects get prioritized at town meeting. So. If we do want to all be working, you know, from the same collective, from the same understanding, basic understanding, we might want to ask Capcom now. To be prepared to talk about that, because if you look at the um, the project list, like of things that come out of the general fund. It's things, it'll say like, I don't know, trying to think of an example, you know, like. Uh, dump truck for DPW, but there isn't a lot of context there that I know Capcom has about, well, the current truck is actually two years past its um. Typical end of life and, you know, the DPW department can't function without this, and so that's why it's been prioritized. They can speak to all of that.
And I think though, then Lindsay, those types of, uh, I agree with you. And um, I think that those types of, and I'm I'm going to use the term smaller. Capital projects, like a truck that costs one hundred thousand dollars, whatever it might be, a big huge dump truck that piles streets and does everything else. Uh, our annual discussions that we have when the um, when free cash. Becomes known and available, and we have that discussion for town meeting, and then we have a separate list of priorities that are relative to. Free cash priorities versus major capital projects that are uh. In in the pipeline, so to say, as well as local budget view that is always part of the the conversation. So. I would, I would ask, uh, I would think we would want to ask uh capital. And I always CPC of capital planning to um. Be prepared to talk about the bigger projects, not those. Uh, free cash projects. You following?
Yeah, because not entirely. You know, the Capcom has kind of operated with those two buckets in mind. Um, I think one of the things that the Capcom is going to want to talk about is if you look at that full queue. Of projects in total, and this includes anything requiring debt issuance and anything that will come out of free cash. Um, it's over two hundred million dollars, so we'll never ever get to all of it. So that's those, that's one of the, and and it's things that affect each of the departments. So I'll use the example of like. Um, the floors in one of the schools, I think it's Flap Fowler, need replacement. That's like a hundred thousand dollar-ish project. Um, additionally, we have sidewalks that need regular repair. That's usually about two hundred thousand dollars. And they're like, they add up and Capcom can prioritize them. But without a better overall process for funding capital projects, we're never going to get to them. We're always going to be just looking at whatever is the greatest emergency. So I think there's that component of it as the process, and Capcom talked a little bit about that last time. And that is informed by budgeting, by overrides, by how we make the choices that we make um for capital expenses. Because um, one of the arguments the Capcom was making at the last meeting was um. That we need to fund a capital line item so that there just are other sources in addition to free cash. Um, the other point that I'll add is just there are a couple of things. In that full list that is meant to be coming out of the general fund that I believe. We've looked at the possibility of bucketing those, like stormwater drains that need replacing, or they're going to cause more damage. Bucketing those so that they total um. A number of projects that could actually, we could, you know, have a debt issuance um for like infrastructure projects. Um, so I I don't know that we want to separate them out, because I think they are kind of inextricably linked to each other.
So what one of the challenges I see is that prioritization involves. Uh, what are likely to be different views on what the criteria should be to assess them. And so I I think that could be one of the challenges with with such a big group. Um, in that uh we're not likely to have a a common vision of what the. Assessment criteria are going to be unless those are set up. So uh, I'm just wondering how that would work in a meeting of this nature, um, you know, with.
That, I mean, for capital projects, the criteria exist, you know, and they're in the capital planning committee's charter and. They're they're clear. We could ask Capcom to bring those and talk about them and either distribute them, you know, share them in advance so people have time to look at them, but. It's the scoring model includes very specific criteria, like does this project um?
Public safety is one issue.
It's public safety, does it comply with the master plan, does it incre- increase our ability, like, does it increase our capacity? Um, does it allow for new growth? Like, they're they're pretty specific, so we could ask Capcom to bring those. Um, or distribute them in advance so that, again, we're all working from the same, like foundational knowledge. Um. You know, I suppose there could be disagreement about those being the actual priorities, but that's what the capital planning committee has used and set forth for um for years now.
And I think those are pretty standard.
I think they are.
Every community, not just Maynard. So it's not like somebody can say, well, you know, who made up this list of uh?
Yeah.
Where to prioritize from. I believe we could probably find that in the MMA somewhere that says, we recommend that you. Cap uh prioritize based on the fall.
Yeah, the association of finance committees, I think, does issue that sort of um. Advice. Uh, but I do also believe that uh capital planning committee members have um. I think they've seen, but you know, like, usually if I see something like that, I will usually forward it to whoever, whether it be finance committee, capital bank committee, whoever. By the way, there's eleven articles up on this or that, we should we should get that. Um, but you you are right. Also, John Martin has been been in, I'm doing this for a bit. And now they're blessed to have Mike Lands come on board. Um, who? His little job is to help tenants plan this stuff out. So I think, I think, thanks. Um. It is good, it is.
Right.
But I, if the board is moving in the direction of sort of teeing up um capital planning. I could, I could even. I think Doug is the chair. Uh, or or I would just ask Lindsay to do it, because she's already listed all the things that she thinks that capital planning committee could provide, so I.
No, you should ask Doug. You should ask Doug, for sure.
Oh, I, oh, okay, I'll ask that, okay.
But I think the other question I have for select board is, you know. Initially, the first meeting that we had for the quad board, I think, was really helpful because to me at least, it got everybody on the same page about. What the capital project needs look like and what the process has been thus far in assessing those those projects and how. Our process historically, as as you said, David, it's like whatever's most on fire or whoever is ready to go to the town for an override. But you hear it come up at town meeting when there's something, you know, on the warrant, or there's some conversation that's happening around. Like, do we want to do an override for bleachers? And someone will stand up and say, well, where does, what does capital planning think about this? And we haven't had a forum. To to really tease out that conversation, and ideally, this is that forum, um, the this tri-board meeting. That said, I'm curious to know from this board, do we want to talk largely about. Kind of what capital project needs look like and what the capital planning committee recommends to manage those costs and expenses and timeline? Or do we really want to get to the meat of the conversa- of, you know. Meat of the conversation being, what is the plan for this fall's town meeting? What is the plan for spring town meeting? Like, are we all on the same page? About anything, you know, that we're going to, that's going to end up on the warrant, asking for an override? Because I think that's the conversation people are hungry to have, so no matter what we do, it's possible that all roads may lead back to that. So if that's the case, then we should structure an agenda to allow for that conversation and debate.
I agree. I think, you know, there's always a a challenge with. Uh, having presentation time to to deliver the content, to allow people to um have the discussions, um, but. um, have the discussions. Um, but at the same time, if that presentation dominates the meeting, then we don't have enough time, um, to actually discuss. Um, would it be reasonable to, and I'm just going to throw a number out there for say 10 to 15 minutes for the, um, capital planning committee to be able to, to make a presentation that would be effective and, and helpful?
I, yeah, I think it's, it's really more about what, to what end do we want them to make a presentation? To me, what I think would be useful, um, to start that conversation is have Capcom take all of the projects that they know, um, not all of them that are in the queue because it's far too many, but you know, the projects that require debt issuance that we know are on everyone's radar, bleachers, DPW garage, um, uh, and senior center. Um, and then also maybe look at like the top, I don't know, 15 to 20 things that are in the, what we'll call, you know, coming out of the general fund bucket, uh, typically because there, there are kind of each individual thing, but then there is in aggregate, you know, do we want to address any of these things if we bun- bundle them together? Um, so I would ask Capcom to take all of those things and come prepared to talk about what, how they have prioritized those things, what each of them is, if people have questions, and how they prioritize them. But I don't think, you know, it needs to be a full presentation. Um, I think 10 to 15 minutes is probably adequate. And then that will help us get to the conversation about, okay, if we decide, you know, because bleachers, that group is ready to move forward and ready to ask the town for an override and it's, um, you know, we want people to understand what the implication is going to be for their taxes. We also need to then understand what's going to happen at spring town meeting and how does that, um, what does that look like and how does that affect, uh, if the senior center is also asking for an operational override at the fall town meeting for leasing space? And then where does that put DPW garage? And I think I would ask, I would hope that Justin could be there to talk about what does that need look like? How critical is it? Um, so it's, it's kind of how all those things are tied together. So for Capcom, I don't know that it's a full presentation. It's more just that they be prepared to talk about each of those things. And then I'd say also for the schools to be prepared to talk about, you know, bleachers and for someone, some representative of senior center steering committee to be prepared to talk about that ask.
I also think it's important to recognize that coming out of this meeting does not mean, okay, we're ready to, to, on August the 6th, to say, we're moving forward with an override. Because we may not be, because it may be that by planning properly, it might take two or three cycles before we're ready. So we can have a full-blown plan to do it right, rather than do the whack-a-mole where by doing something because it's, it's ready, we now have knocked another project 10 years down the road versus having it go five years down the road where it might have been able to become a fruition if we hadn't done something because it was time to do it. It's the planning aspect that, uh, you know, and making it clear that just because it's a town meeting doesn't mean we have to have an override.
I think, I think, I think you better be prepared for some arguments to the con- to the contrary of what you just said, uh, and I don't necessarily disagree with what you've said. But I think you're going to get some arguments, um, in certain directions, um, from certain groups. One, I know the seniors are gonna, I know that the senior senate committee is 100% expecting some sort of override or debt exclusion for a lease that they don't have in hand. They don't have a dollar amount, they don't have a location, you know, but they yet, they still want to have, uh, um, you know, and I was on a call with them today, they still want to have that discussion and be part of the August 30th, um, July 30th meeting, number, that's the first thing. You know, the second, the second thing is that, um, you know, we, we don't, we don't have a location. We don't have any of those things, but they're still going to want that, they're still going to want that to be part of that conversation and part of that meeting. Um, you know, that's. And I think they want to have, they want to have, I don't know necessarily that they want to have a seat at this meeting, but they're hoping that either us or FinCom is, is part of that conversation. You know, Jack, Jack has talked to everybody in town. He's had private little meetings and little seances with all sorts of people trying to get where he wants to get. The bottom line is the five of us, you know, have a say in what that is and what it becomes. And that is a committee that's supposed to be an advisory committee to us. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we still haven't heard word one from the study group that we spent, you know, whatever number, whatever the number ended up being for, um, to do a study of the seniors and the senior needs and the, and the, what our intention should be. Yet that seems to be, you know, the, the groups that are part of the senior senate committee and which I'm on, which I, which I, I fostered that, if you remember, right? I pushed, I pushed for that to try and get the three groups in the room. The underlying theme of the whole thing up until they got together in the same room was the study, the study, the study. Now suddenly you got 12 people in a room, nobody wants to know about the study. Well, I think.
I, I think.
They need to study and want to study.
And I think, I think that there is a lot of truth to that, but I al- I also believe that part of what is driving this sense of urgency on their part. I mean, the email we got earlier this week that says, you know, this is what they're planning on doing. I believe because they have heard the other rumblings about an override being pushed from another source. And the fear is that goes through, we're again out and we're not going to see anything even in the spring. I think that they would be willing to, and this is just my sense from having spoken to the folks, some of them, not all, but some of them is that they're willing to be a bit patient, but not, they're not going to be patient if it's evident that somebody else is kicking in the door on them. And as a result of them kicking in the door, they're sick and tired of having to kick, the door kicked in on them. So they're going to move forward with their proposal because, because what I quote, it's ready.
And the term they, the term they use is kick the can, don't kick the can further down the road. And I agree, I agree with that sentiment 100%. And I, and I, and I agree that it's, you know, it's, it's time to do something along the, the lines of a senior center. But, you know, we, we're supposed to be, you know, driving the bus together with that group. And I'm just telling you, I was on the phone with them today, I was with them today and I, you know, I said, I'll, I'll, I'll carry the water for you guys and tell everybody what you want. And what you want is they want to be on the warrant, they want to be, they want to vote on that date. But, you know, to get that done, if you're going to have a conversation on, um, July 30th, that leaves seven days to get something onto, you know, onto the docket for the state election. And then, and then another five days, uh, before you have to have a warrant. And the warrant has to be complete before it's submitted, which means you have to have a location. You have to have a dollar amount, you have to have, you know, a lot of different factors, um, in hand, in, in ready to go. And, and I don't, you know, I, I know that, um, Jack McKean and, and Jerry and, um, Linda, you know, who were on the financial group along with, um, Josh and myself, they're, they're knocking themselves out to get that information, but it's just, you know, you're dealing with, um, the mill and then you're dealing with a, a group, the construction arm of, um, capital properties and the construction arm of capital properties hasn't, hasn't returned Jack's call in two weeks. And, you know, um, the conversations with the mill, e- at least from his comment today, his direct comment was, I'm not getting a warm fuzzy feeling out of the mill. So, you know, if we don't have those things, how do we, how do we put that on the warrant regardless of what it says?
Yeah, I don't think that project is ready for the warrant either. But the point is, and that gets back to my original point, just because uh, there's a warrant, doesn't mean something has to be on there for an override in, in the fall. If, especially if the five of us don't believe as a community, as the, the ones that are sort of overlooking and stewarding this, the, the ship, if we don't think it's ready, we shouldn't be promoting. And if we don't think the town is prepared because the long-term, uh, health or fiscal responsibility of our job is to make sure that the long-term approach is what is looked at, not the short-term whacking that mold because a project is ready.
I, I think maybe we're bearing into, um, what the discussion in the meeting next week or two weeks from now is going to be about. I, I think tonight we're really focusing on what the, uh, how we're going to structure the agenda. Um, these, these are certainly very useful comments. Um, so I, I, I have one bit of a novice question here. If the schools, um, have their own capital planning, um, items, do they appear on the list that the capital planning, uh, committee has or are they on the separate?
Yeah, they do. So.
Okay. So it's not like we have to go in addition to the schools to say, okay, so what are your items? Cause they're already on those.
Like any department, they submit overriding and then have.
I just wanted to clarify.
They're supposed to, but historically what we have seen and I'm not going to say not to be critical because it is critical. Uh, historically, what we've seen is schools' issues come up last second. And it, therefore it ruins the opportunity to have any real capital planning because there's serious money involved.
Yeah. And I, and I would hope.
And I think, can I just add?
This conversation is to address that. Sorry, Lindsay.
That's okay. Um, in regards to capital planning and their process, yes, projects like the bleachers are on the radar of the capital planning committee. It becomes confusing or, I don't know, more nuanced, I'll say, when the schools from the outset have said, this is going to be an expensive project, so we are going to need an override for it. So it's kind of like, at that point, capital planning committee can say, well, we don't recommend you do that now, or we do recommend you do that now. Um, but capital planning committee is an advisory group, they're not, it's not a governance committee. So they can't say yes or no, or we won't consider you at all. If the schools or any department says, I want to go to the town and ask for an override for this, it's helpful for capital planning to have an understanding of it because they're trying to get a holistic view of everything for all the planning, but it moves out of their purview pretty significantly when it's not coming out of free cash. Cause that's historically where, or free cash or receipts where most things have gotten funded out of. But capital planning is fully aware of the bleachers. And I also think the bleachers have been a conversation for like six years. This one is not a new one. You know, when I started on Capcom, it was like, oh yes, the bleachers, we need to replace the bleachers. And the project estimates were from 900,000 all the way up to 2 million. And then it was like, okay, we need to figure out how we, you know, get a better sense of what the cost is going to be. And it's gone back and forth. And then it was like, oh, well, we, if you give us half a million, then we could replay, repair the bleacher. So it's, that's not, I don't know, you know, that that's a new or that's come out of nowhere. It's just that what I think the conversation should be for the tri-board meeting is first of all, all of this, like everything that we're talking about now. But we need to collectively say, okay, everybody put your cards on the table. What are you hoping for? Senior center, you're hoping to go to fall town meeting and get an operational override so that you can have $200,000 a year. The issues that are going to come up are, do you have a location yet? Do you have an amount yet? What are the, you know, I, I was looking at, um, what they're looking for money for, some of the costs are one-time costs. So if it's $200,000, but 60,000 of that is actually a, a one-time cost in the first year, do we want to keep giving them 200 a year? Do we want to actually stage that in some way? Like those are all the conversation, uh, or questions we should ask when we're all together. Because then the schools can say, well, we have the bleachers and we're ready to go and, you know, um, whatever, all of their arguments will be in favor of that. Um, and we can all ask questions and then, then everyone's working from the same context to make the decision to say, all right, do we all agree that X, Y, or Z should be on the, the warrant for the fall? I know that that's the select board's choice and under the select board's purview, but I think that that group of people, um, is the right group of people to be contributing to that conversation and making arguments for and against.
So there's a long-range conversation that the, um, the senior senate committee has a, 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 a short-term, midterm and long-range set of goals and solutions. I told them today, they're crazy if they didn't propose to somebody in a short term that when they go to build the bleachers and they need to put new bleachers and they have to build a building, they have to build an outbuilding, right? For, for restrooms. It's going to be something that they're going to consider for, um, concessions, um, a place to store, store equipment. Why not make the building big enough to house a senior center at the same time? Relocate the basketball courts and put it all in one spot. And then you, you kill two birds with one stone, you save some money on each side and everybody, everybody, it's a win for everybody. And by the way, it's the only piece of property in town, large enough to support something like that, that the town owns other than, you know, the, um, old file of school is about to talk about in the next couple of minutes, 61, 63 summer. But certainly if we're gonna, if we're going to, um, get into the process of building an outbuilding for the bleachers and whatever happens at that spot, why wouldn't we consider at some point increasing the size and making that a senior center as well? And, and relocating, you know, three basketball courts? Because we have rooms, different places for three basketball courts.
So that's where, like, that I would love to see our town get to, to be doing more quote, you know, aligned planning like that. We might be too far down the road. I don't know. That's a question for the schools, um, to do that. But I, Chris, I am fully with you and I would love to see us not just doing all of this in such a siloed fashion that we end up with very siloed outcomes, which is, oh, we just threw up this here because we needed it. Oh, but actually it turns out this building could have been married with it. So like, that's absolutely.
That's exactly the point, Lindsay. And that's why, you know, uh, there will be upset people uh, on this, the 30th of July, if we were to say, yeah, that sounds like a great potential long-term plan. So guess what? We're not moving forward with any bleachers because that's going to ruin the opportunity of even exploring it's an opportunity. If we go forward with it and they voted, then suddenly we've got no opportunity for that as, as an option because they're full bore. It's, it's been voted through and we've now got no opportunity to actually have that long-term plan. So I'm, we're on the same page.
At the, at the risk of, uh, you know, seeing us go too far down this road of discussing things that maybe we're looking for in, in two weeks from now. Um, I would like to propose that we, we've made some progress here on, um, the planning of the meeting rather than necessarily what we're going to actually say at the meeting. Um, and, uh, I'm sorry, there was another thought that came to me there. Um, so, oh, I know what it was. Sorry. The, um, making sure that, um, who's going to be responsible for contacting John Larkin? Would that be us or would that be you?
Oh, I, um, I will do it because I tried to bounce past it, didn't I, and?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to them. No, Greg, you know what? I'll reach out to them because I have a sense of what that looks like and what to tell them they should prepare. So I'm happy to do that.
That, that was the point I was making. Maybe I wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know.
It was like, you said that so well, you should probably write that in an email. So that.
I'm sorry. I couldn't, I couldn't hear. This is the failure.
And then when we. I'm sorry. And then when we meet next week for the, um, the goal-setting meeting, then we have an opportunity as a board to, with Jeff present, um, to finalize, um, the, the planning of this piece.
Well, at least the goals, which would inform to do, I absolutely agree.
Yeah.
Potentially. I mean, who knows where we are then, but, um, there's a good point.
Okay. But I think, I think from what I'm hearing from the four of us is we're probably a lot more on the same page than it may appear from somebody looking in from the outside, hearing what I'm hearing. I think everybody seems to be saying the same thing, just in maybe different ways, that we have to slow down and have a plan and move forward with a plan that may include more than one opportunity at the same time. So.
And it's a plan that, that, uh, like looks, looks at our debt management.
Exactly. Long-term plan with, with a vision.
Okay.
And one of the things.
My suggestion is just the long range. I don't know that, um, you know, that there's still the, the short-term solution for the senior senate committee. And that's, and that's the, um, warrant article that they have sent to all of us at different times over the past couple of weeks a week. And that's, that's.
Got that coming up.
We're talking about two different things.
Yeah. On the, the agenda and a couple of items from there.
And we, by the way, we, we are the ones that charge them with those multiple looks.
Yeah.
Yeah. One other point that I just want to make to this group and I will make again, I think when we're all together is that I think we've gotten into, um, the, a, a pattern, I'll say, um, of of this becoming like very mutually exclusive. If we decide to do this one thing, then we can't possibly do this other thing. And it, it's, these things are not mutually exclusive. These are not binary choices. We can actually say, we're going to prioritize this one thing for now because this other thing can wait until spring. But what I've heard in these conversations and in town and, and, you know, um, in departments over the last couple of years of being on capital planning, it, it gets very, um, black and white. And I, I don't think it has to be that way. I think what Capcom was getting after last time was with some planning, we can do a lot more of the things that we want to do. We just have to all agree on the cadence, um, and the, you know, the order. We just have to all agree on the cadence um and the, you know, the order in which we do it and how we adequately fund the process.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. All right, uh, are we all clear to move on to the next item for now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right. So item eleven, um special town meeting, uh setting the date, time and place for special town meeting. Um Greg, do you have any?
So this is, this is procedural. Um, I I I try to do all and uh thank, commend, sort of, also for our hard work and putting uh all the thought and diligence into the timeline, in this case for the next time meeting, I feel like assuming we do one on the next. Um in this case, um our recommendation is, it'll get a calendar, is to set the um special town meeting to the fall, which again is a not requisite, but it is a common practice. Um, set the date for Monday, October seventh twenty four, and on the the balance sheet. Um, I believe that 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 aligns with a lot of our push carries cycles. So about this time of year is when I'll have or hopefully the next few weeks, I'll have the state budget, all the sections, recommendations, this like where they're bending the that Y twenty five current uh budget, and then those amendments are generally reflected in the fall. And then a couple of weeks after the special time meeting, um board assesses needs and and chief assess a recommends classification, so it all, this also proceeded to be done um for many years, here at the mayor. Um and October seventh is the date. Um, yeah, that's the date.
All right. Uh, do we have a motion?
Yeah, um I will move to set the date, time and location of the twenty twenty four special town meeting as Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty four, beginning at seven P M at the Fowler School Auditorium, Three Tiger Drive, Maynard.
Second.
Thank you. And we have a a roll call. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Yep, David?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Uh, next item, uh sixty one, sixty three Summer Street. So uh this isn't with the intent of making any decision tonight, obviously, because I think we have, uh, this is a complicated topic. But really, just to start the conversation, um, I mean, I would like to set maybe, you know, ten minutes or so for this one. Um, and to, you know, obviously, our goal here is to be able to uh instruct the the town on uh details of what an RFP might look like, you know, what we really want for that building and what's feasible for the building um in the coming years. Um, and we do have Andy Morleen, who's kindly come to to join us um today. And uh another action is to consider dissolving the sixty one, sixty three Summer Street reuse committee. Um, so that that's what we have here. But how about, uh, maybe we discuss that one first? We can consider that. Um, I did communicate with the the members of the committee. And there are two members of the committee, at least, who um are willing to dissolve the committee, but are still very willing to contribute their knowledge and expertise as the discussions continue. So is there any reason at this point that we should um not dissolve the the reuse committee?
Uh, I would say I would prefer to keep them at this point until we have sort of completed the any RFP process or whatever. So we can use their, they've had meeting at the meeting at the meeting, having discussions so that we can discuss with them when the time comes for the final decision. They can actually be a committee that might be able to help us in the room as a room um as opposed to having to then call individually or whatever, have them not have any official authority. So I would prefer to keep them. They they don't have to meet, they can be dormant or whatever needs. And if we, if there's a need for them, they can be called in, but they're still part of the committee and obviously very uh uh, you know, uh as active as they want to be relative to the issue, at least ready and able.
Yeah, technically, they're down to three members now, as the one member uh did officially resign. Um, I don't know if that makes a difference.
Um, all right, so either way, it's um maybe all pre-resigned, because that's how I mean you you dissolve, discharge. I mean, some committees just sort of dormant.
Right.
But anyway, I I think uh I would probably look to those same people at some point, you know, to support or help with the RFP by this.
And that's why I think we should keep them.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to be a committee, uh, because even if I ask, I mean, the the advantage of it being a committee that is very public process. So then if it's, if that evaluation is done at a committee meeting, then it's publicly as opposed to most of the evaluations that's done on the chief of the office or something, I I I value it. Mostly, you get it. And it's and it's somewhat public, but it's not posted. It's, I just ask.
Uh, Lindsay or Chris, any input to that?
I mean, that's, I don't have a problem either way. Keeping him is fine.
Yeah. Okay, we're not asking them to meet every two weeks.
I think we know who they are and where to find them if we need them.
Yeah.
The fact that we call them a committee still doesn't really affect that anyway. There's evidence of the fact that Andy's sitting there, right?
Yeah, exactly. We got one with, one of them right here. Yeah. All right, so um let's keep the committee dormant for now, if that's the right term to use.
Yeah, sure.
Um, okay, and so that does not come with an obligation for them to have to meet, obviously. Yeah, okay. Um, as far as the, you know, what kind of a useful discussion we might have now, um we do have uh Andy present with us. Um, I'm not sure, Andy, if you feel like you'd want to make any comments at this point. No, I mean, the, I went through the report. It was a very extremely thorough report. Um, most of it in terms of bulk was about the assessment, um the appraisal. Now, that was made in twenty twenty one. Is it fair to say that that's pretty out of date? No, it does. Is it still?
Okay, potentially, because the conditions have changed somewhat, voting itself, um but the property is the same.
Yeah.
Location's the same. Um, I think the potential that's probably to have, if if you just sort of extract, it's really high. I mean, it's a very thorough report. Um, so if if something is has changed, it's probably like the dollar now. They they assign a certain perceived market value. Um, but I think the potential, that still looks true, which I do believe the committee better in their um, in their evaluation, their assessment, like, you know, like, you're considering different type of reuses um and and the value of their resources. Anyways, so it is a little out of date. I I'm not sure about then redoing the appraisal report. If I'm sorry, that's why or not.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted, just thinking about the uh the relevance of that particular piece of information and the overall um, you know, decision making that we're going to have to make. Um, the the biggest barrier that I see at the moment is, you know, trying to assess the current state of awareness uh of the market for investors in any of these options. Uh, I mean, I know I have my personal preference for for the direction I would like to see the town go, which is something along the line of uh, you know, an arts community, maybe combined with uh if need be, some kind of a a community center. Um, but everything is going to depend on whether or not there are people out there, whichever of these options we might favor. And whether there are people out there who are willing to invest a considerable sum of money. And, you know, I'm an educator. I don't know this stuff. Um, so I just wonder any thoughts that others might have about this at this time and how we can use that to um, you know, continue our discussion as as we work to make a decision on this over the next couple of meetings or so.
Um, can I ask a clarifying point for myself? Sorry that I don't know this, but just so I understand the process, I know that this committee, um thank you very much to any committee members that are in the room. I can't quite see, but um to the the entire committee, I know that you've done an extensive amount of work over a very long period of time. And it's clear and evidenced in the report that you prepared, which looks great. Um, so thank you for all that work. Uh, but is the process that the committee has made the recommendations to the board and the board will now take this and then the board will issue a direction and then the town will issue RFP? An RFP? Is that how this works? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have a question, just in looking at the different options, and I'm not sure who this question is for. It might be for Andy, it might be for Greg. Um, it looks like, so I was looking at the the cost ratio analysis based on Steve's assessment. And it looked like the, you know, the top choice or the highest score was this arts, you know, having this be continue as artist rentals or selling these units to artists. Um, and then it looked like the second best option, in my opinion, was um fifty five plus housing, senior housing um with the possibility of including, you know, community center, senior center. Am I correct in understanding that um for the artist community option? It it says that this is an unproven um, you know, concept and that I think to Mike's point, we we don't really have any sense of whether or not this would actually be successful if this is what we decided to do. Whereas a fifty five plus community, there probably is more precedent for success in development in that in recent years. That might be kind of reductive, but am I understanding that correctly?
Um, Lindsay, let's just say, um, the fifty five plus is a totally different impact on the town. You have to recognize that um when you're evaluating, these are not apples to apples. Um, you know, the percentages that were given and stuff were, they're they're refundable. I'm not sure that Steve did his very best job. Silver Steve will repair the analysis and the um, you know, the debt cost ratio, whatever that is, there's a word for it, not all time, not, um, but there are lots of different factors. You can change those numbers pretty easy. I think you get a best, yes, F with it. Um, you know, no one really pushed this really hard. We were trying to deal with the so-called political feelings here in the town of Maynard. The board gave us a charge of giving them at least five options, not making a decision. We had very strong opinions about, but we never, never given the charge to give you a an evaluation of best choice. Um, and that would have been a whole nother discussion for our committee to approach. Our approach was to try to find doable things and present them to you. Um, the contractors that um M A D C brought in had some very interesting conversations. The thing you've got to realize is how disruptive the construction industry has been in the last three years, four years. And I think that it slowed them. A lot of that, the the percentage of interest has not been changing as well to the way as it was. Um, the the price of materials has stabilized. Um, I think people can give a much better sense of it than we were interviewing those on those developers. Those developers were very skittish at the time and very hopeful about whether or not anybody would invest in that. I think that the example we have with the firehouse is another one where we don't know whether the business industry is ready to take these kind of risks that they've done the last twenty years, right, and um.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we've spent the money that we need to to investigate what the value of that is. We can throw it out as an RFP and see what sticks. The minute you dig into that building and see what's there and what the costs are going to be, you're acquiring a risk that you have to share all that information. You find a big bugaboo that goes through the building forever. If you don't do anything, whoever makes an offer has to take that risk on themselves. And that's real warned over and over again by contractors and developers that um to consider.
Um, I know a a couple of the options require um some rezoning considerations. Uh, do we anticipate any barriers, significant barriers there? And if we were to go down through those options, um, are there any zoning decisions that would need to be made that would likely be extremely problematic as opposed?
One issue could be, and I don't know if it would apply, is the one year moratorium uh for a historic building. Uh, would that apply in this instance?
Can you speak to this or or is the whole, I, that's a great question. But by the progression voice, the building itself is not, but is not um historically, but I think it's listed on the macros, but that doesn't, which is an acronym for like that.
I'm talking about our own town by law.
Right, I'm I'm asking, did it within the demolition delay because it's hell of a know of this off the top of our head. I think it is. I think there's a one year delay. I mean, part of the beauty of the, but don't, you know, we'd be right. I'm trying to bring it up as well, but I, and also I can't speak to these other.
By the time somebody purchases it, a year is going to go by before anything happens anyway. So it's somewhat irrelevant, except that somebody may be hesitant to takes take on a uh a property that they know they can't really do anything with at all.
That's true, but I I think the demolition, sorry, I need to rest. But I think the demolition delay, I'm trying to remember what triggers it, but if it's a, if it's an application for a building permit, that is, that is an extension, like that is an extensive delay. Like, when a building, when a developer applies a building permit, they expect that.
Demolition delay by law.
Am I incorrect? I'm sorry, it's a long story, the demolition.
I think, I guess, can I just say, you're making the assumption someone pointed to that there. My impression from everybody in the, that we almost unanimously was that tearing it down doesn't have a lot of value. The property, once you tore it down, the cost you put into it, it's not necessarily improved in cost. So it's very unlikely economically to make sense. And the town of Maynard's attachment to it is almost, you know, it's huge.
No, I would.
The fireman says not, yeah. So the RFP is part of, our committee was concerned with 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 providing tearing. Uh, we we gave you some options wherever it's torn down. The the single family homes, the townhouses, um were the two options that allowed that that prerequisiteed tearing it down. I don't know about the year delay. I think that, you know, whether that would be a big bugaboo or not, but I'm just saying that if this select board feels that turning it down is an option, then that's something you need to discuss. If this select board decides that we don't want to see that thing for an hour, we're going to put in our heat, it kind of says that's not one of the things.
I guess it's broadly, we wish to write them RFP as to what to.
Yeah, without lots.
As if. As we say, all the developers that I came across seem to like the aesthetic that was presented by the building's envelope. So they saw it as a um as an advantage. Uh, and then again, even saying cost to tear down, people were estimating upwards of three million. So it wasn't economically.
Yeah.
And I think to address Lindsay's point, there are some similar types of the, you know, rental to the the artists, studio models that exist, all you know, must be pretty familiar with these. We had um Josh, we had Josh come in who had done a similar type of work in New Jersey and saw the potential for it. His concerns were primarily about the the foundation. Saw a lot of recognized, so it's going to take a heavy lift. And to to address your point about the cost benefit ratio, remember that the benefit cost ratio is on the perspective of town. So it's not from the perspective of an individual developer. That's what Andy's alluding to. Those decisions of whether or not it's going to be feasible, that was not considered in the uh from the ratio, you know, the the numbers that that we gave you in the interview.
We've also learned some lessons from the um the adult housing, if you want to call it that, older housing, aged housing, however, what I refer to um over at Parker Street with the increase in uh emergency calls and the increase that has caused are the 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 stress that. Are the, the, the stress that that has put on the fire department and the E M T runs. And we saw earlier that the ambulance, we might be needing a second ambulance sooner than rather than later. Which would then beg the question of staffing for the fire department, so. Making a choice that increases the elderly population. Although I think that many people in town may choose to live there because they can move out and downsize, so to say. Um.
Well, that was going to be, if I can interrupt briefly, yeah, um, one of my questions was that can an RFP. Uh, be framed to prioritize Maynard residents? I know that was one of the issues that came up in the report.
That's a good question. I, I don't know.
Um, that's a planning board question. I actually asked someone in the planning board that. Um, I don't know technically, I think to some degree you can, but you can't require, you can't say that every single, um. You know, for a worse senior housing unit has to go to a Maynard resident, but you can. Add in some caveat so that some of it does go to Maynard residence, according to the planning board number I spoke to.
And that was part of the, that was, I don't think we got much reaction from Maynard residents. At the property over in Parker Street where it was prioritized. Um, as well as there was another property where, um. Might have been Jimmy McDonald's, uh, one of Jimmy McDonald's buildings that was prioritized to Maynard, and people don't jump on it. You think, you know, you think we have a big elderly population, everybody wants to stay or whatever, but they don't jump on it. That's my recollection from, I think we wanted Jimmy McDonald's buildings, I don't remember which one. I think it's the yellow building, though.
The, um, the, the problem at, the problem at, uh, Camilla Gardens is affordability.
Yeah.
It's not, that's not really, it's not really housing, it's, you know, it's a, it's a hybrid. It's a hybrid housing care situation and that's just, was, you know. Um, I don't, I don't know how many Maynard residents are there that were, you know, Maynard residents prior to them opening that, but. That was a huge issue, you know, amongst people that were hoping to get there.
Yeah, it is, it's very expensive.
So affordable housing has like, has, does have some rules, there can be some, um, discerning. Allocation of the affordable housing, it could be the five or all, that, that Steve, one of the representatives. That there is some, um, advantage to an African that has to be resident. In applying for lottery or for.
Affordable housing, absolutely, I didn't know we were referencing affordable housing.
No, we're not, I, I'm, I'm correct, I'm different, senior housing versus four lots, and, um. Anyway, so for that, that reason, that, that, I think something I'll, I'll see if I can find out, particularly about seniors. Um, but it all goes back to the, the concept of this whole item is. Fuel level focus, are we looking to limit, um, what we want out of this project? Or are we looking to have it expand as possible? We, we've kind of done both attempts for the old party. We tried to make it as super broad as possible and we had a good bite. Um, and the second round, we were a little more focused.
What would you prefer, Graham? Would we be broad or would we, uh?
Um, um, I have the advantage for this minute of only looking at the bottom line. I am, I am concerned about the town's offers and the, and how much tax revenue we're going to get.
That's, that's appropriate.
That's fair, but that's what I'm saying, I, I have a, uh, almost like an, uh, impassioned perspective. At the same time, I also recognize, as we all do, um, the need for more housing in the Commonwealth in general. Um, Maynard, as my, as my perception is, Maynard is a, uh, victim of our own success. I met with the assessor today and that is right. Which is good, and I'm grateful to hear like Mike, um, Willbell, um, just moved to town, that's wonderful. But I don't see Maynard as being quite as accessible as it is, like my perception is. And I think that will, for better or for worse, continue to evolve with the new elementary school. That is a very marketable asset to the community. And, um, and those sort of amenities are what I would want to look forward to moving to a. A greater metro Boston area that is dense enough, you can walk anywhere, get the shops, play schools. It's very marketable now, um, so I do, I do appreciate. Any attempt for balance, balancing that growth and allowing for people to still. And still sort of maintaining that condition that Maynard's place may not be able to afford our more affluent neighbors in, in Maynard, like our budding geography. Really, but, but maybe people don't need to move to still and have this mansion with citizens. They can move to Maynard and have like this lifestyle they do. And, and I would, I would, I would regret missing an opportunity that this, this particular department could give us now, same with the fire station. Like I, I have the fire station, it's very difficult, even if it's much smaller, but still, like, you don't, it's very. Rare that government has this opportunity to.
So you're leaning towards, um, housing?
I'm torn between. Um. I'm torn between senior housing and mixed housing, but that's only to accomplish like a greater good. At the same time, as I, remember I said, my initial point was the bottom line, which means that artist's workspace is very attractive. Like Steve's top benefit announcement that you pointed out. Was to say, what would be the impact to town services? Artist's loss or whatever, they would be perting. It's a very minimal, like, we, yes, we make sure the water turns on so they can get their sewage back, but there's no showers. There's, um, there's no kids in schools and stuff, um, there's no ambulance services, hopefully. Um, but I also don't want to. I don't want to kid ourselves and think there's going to be some massive, huge, angel investor that would suddenly swoop in. And spend thousands of dollars and probably get that and stuff, because unlike Concord. Which my understanding is, there is much more, um, philanthropy and influence and sort of like donations and whatnot, we're, we're just, we're not. So I don't think we should expect that, that, and if we can't expect that, what's our next best option? I could be wrong, maybe we could do an RFP and say, hey, we're thinking about artist spaces. And, and maybe, maybe someone does come out, so like, oh, we're, we're looking to move from Chicago and, and we think Maynard is our spot and we have a ton of money. Great. Maybe that happens. And, or maybe it doesn't, and we spent a couple of months developing this RFP and then, and it's. That, the, the, there's a, really, um, this whole discussion for any delay in, in any sort of turn. Is a, um, lost opportunity, since there's opportunity lost, the longer we don't try to solve the problem, the less internal getting. So whether it be revenues or housing for artists.
So, so can we, could we craft an RFP that essentially says we're looking for. Um. Some type of retention of the structure.
Yeah, you could.
With housing. And leave it open for whether or not it is mixed. You know, ju- general housing for anybody that wants to rent, senior housing or just pl- over fifty-five house.
No, you, you can do that.
Can you V back broad and then just throw it out there and see who comes back?
Yes, you can, um, the hard part is then what to do with the results. And the RFP allows for evaluation criteria to, to, to. To, well, one, the developer wants to know, like, well, it's not going to work, it's not going to be worth my time, they're not going to pay me because they don't actually want mixed use housing. You know, um, so evaluation criteria would assign values to whatever those proposals are. And, and that is something I'm looking to get from the select board, if you have that direction, if you're willing to just be broad, then we can see what we get, but. Generally, RFPs say it would be more advantageous if you pitch us higher, you're going to maybe see positive, we'll give you five out of five. But if you're, but if we see a pitch that's artist-only, we'll give you four, or whatever the ratio, yeah, I, I don't know. And, um, generally, that's how the RFPs work, which incentivizes that type of project from the developer. And it indicates what the committee is looking for, doesn't, but doesn't always work out like that, Mike, the best. The best you get is all threes out of five, and that's okay, like it doesn't, doesn't mean you're not. But it also doesn't mean you even have to take that RFP. We, we did, uh, we did this, we did the, um, firehouse twice, and so on, we, I, I haven't even posed anything to select board yet. Cause I'm still not sure if we want to go to the next step with that, so.
Are we still able to also, for example, put in an RFP that, that one of the criteria would be. Uh, consideration of donation of potential.
Yes.
Space.
Yes, you can.
Through the town.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, you can do that.
For the use potentially of, again, long-range plan.
You can do that.
Theory.
You can really do anything, like you can, you, you, you can do anything, we, which is what we did for the first attempt with fire station. They, they could do both retaining about building and tearing down, but like for the first fire station, you just want to see what people would do with the problem. Um, but it was potentially too limiting. But you're right, you could do that, you could say, we'll give you five out of five points of, um. Community inclusion, whatever we title it, if you show us that you will devote X amount of square foot, you, you try to be kind of specific, because you, we want to give. You want.
Use as a senior.
Potentially, you could do that. So that's it, so yes, you can be as nuanced as you want, or, or none. And, 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 uh, that's really helpful too in RFP, if you point out the desires. Generally, when you sell, um, and it's what we've done traditionally in Maynard, when, um. When the government sells real estate, we, we both negotiate a purchase sale period and development period. And in the development period, it's generally reflected with what we already said we wanted in our. And that way, it's, it's, it's no surprise that we're negotiating for the development period, we say like, hey, you told us you're going to do this and this and this, now just sign the contracts and pay it to them. So that's why RFP is very, it's so valuable.
Where are you leaning?
I'm sorry.
Where are you leaning?
Um, well, I'm leaning in trying to understand where, as Greg said, you know, where we would get the best. Bankroll, but I mean, I like the idea of mixed use. Uh, and certainly the idea of making some of the space available for, for town use, um, I think would, would be great. It, it, I'm just struck by the challenges of finding the, the investment. And I think we may have to follow the investment rather than, um, where our sense of personal perfection.
I, I, I get it.
Yeah.
I think it's going to take more conversation, but we don't want to drag it out too long.
Right, so with that in mind, I know to, tonight this was intended as a preliminary discussion, so, uh, unless there's something else that anybody would like to add. We can move on to the.
Comments. Yep, Lindsay or, or Chris?
Yeah, any of you guys want to add anymore, otherwise we can move on, um, you know. Continue our conversation, uh, when Jeff is back.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine.
The conversation. Okay, all right, thank you, well, that's got the, the ball rolling at least. And, and again, Andy, thank you and your team for, uh, the material that you've given us.
And there is a demolition delay, um, I, I couldn't, it was two years ago, but it's still a commission delay, but I, I have it. There is.
So they could not share that, share that.
Not in its entirety, I don't recall the details of demolition delay, I think there's a certain amount of, um. There's a certain proportion of ability they can play.
I think it's the pillar.
Probably, and in RFP, you get some goodness for the background, but, um, who would do a long background street, the, that particular reason that he said. You can do what you want with certain parts of the property, but other parts of the property will be preserved, and I, and they list in very specific items. Which in itself is, is, um, confining, is a developer, doesn't, developers don't like to be constrained. They, they want performance on the property. So it depends what.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the senior center, um, I know we've already had a little bit of discussion about that tonight. Um, but I think, is this specific to the, uh, RFI that came out?
That was going to be my only report is that, um, the R, uh, RFI, their customer satisfaction. Um, which is not an RFP, it's not a I P, which is a, it is, it is just a survey. Um, I have gotten one bite so far, um, and then, um, I don't think I've got any others, and then, um. Let's do the log sec, but I gave three weeks, which is a long time, but I tried to make sure that no one said they didn't have the option. So it's on the website, you know, registered.
Great, thank you.
In order to have a, in order to have a response to the, uh, the RFI, it has to go back through the website. As suggested in the RFI, correct?
Uh, to register to receive the RFI, you have to register, then it says, when you're ready to submit something, you send it to me. So in email time.
I would, I would, can you check with Jerry in the morning then, or tomorrow at some point and ask him? Where they have the information on other sources than the, than what might have come back through the, the channels that you suggest? Cause I was on a call with them today and they suggested they have information back from at least two people.
Oh, well, I also have over two hundred, hundred emails, um, so it might be, I haven't seen yet, but, um. I can, I can check in with Jerry.
All right. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, the, uh, select board fiscal year twenty twenty-five organization, the assigning the liaisons. And I know that there was just one change, uh, from the last one, which was changing. Uh, putting me on the E D C, who is my name on the E D C liaison instead of Jeff, that was an error. From the document that came out last time, were there any other changes, Greg? I didn't know.
So we swapped out, it's the same, um, right, and, and, um, just. So I, I just wanted to put it back on the boards to your, to that one, um. Therefore, the, the, you, you know, I can receive the board heading, you know, any emails.
Okay, yeah, do, does anybody have any, uh, concerns or questions about the list as it's presented? No? Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Move to approve, uh, the select board's fiscal year twenty twenty-five liaison assignments as presented.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, the roll call, Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Um, correspondences. Um, I don't think we have anybody else present, um. The only thing, I looked into the issue of the, um, the accident that was reported up on, um. Uh, twenty-seven, um, and, uh, I did speak with, uh, Chief Noble about it. And so he's, um, they've completed their investigation apparently. Um, so he was able to tell me that there's only been one accident in that area in the last five years. So it's clearly not a hotspot, um, although, which isn't to diminish the, um, the, the, the problem that existed the other week. Um, but I, I just wanted it to be known that I was able to check in with Chief Noble about that.
Yeah, the one comment I would make is in the last five years, that area has become much more, uh. Uh, active vehicular traffic, given the park street development, uh, it's something to keep an eye on. Uh, and given that the kids are nearby, um, at the Boys and Girls Club and its proximity to the schools. With the traffic coming through there, it's something we should be, uh, at least aware of. And considering, you know, you're making sure the chief has got his eyes on it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he, he let me know today that, uh, you know, some of the, how complicated the issue gets is. For example, if you have two sets of lights too close together, then it's almost as if one negates the other in terms of people.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if the streetlights, okay, but the amount of flashing.
Exactly, yeah, so it, it, uh, it, it's not as simple as just saying that there was an accident there, let's, let's put in this solution.
Great, yeah.
It is, it is a lot more complicated, but I was, I was pleased to note that Chief Noble, um, was able to talk about it and discuss.
He did give some input, it was just a little last minute, um, side of support you, you all, but it's also a little for that. Which is, speaks very much to what you just said, right, um, it, it does, does report. Uh, from that particular incident and then, and then his perception and recommendations. Again, he doesn't immediately, I'm summarizing, he doesn't, he doesn't, there's an immediate need for an additional, um. Pedestrian crossing at that particular section, um, on Parker House from the, you know, the intersection center. Um, for all the similarities you noted, like it doesn't, there's, there's nothing that's going to be there, sending it to the intersection.
Right.
Um, I think you're, you're right, David, I think it's easier to.
It's backed up, although the good news is that the traffic heading typically towards. It's the suburban direction, southbound.
Yeah.
Uh, is usually backed up, so there's, you know, there's no speed for those vehicles, because people would start away safe. And the people coming in the other direction that, uh, presumably gives some opportunities. But.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments about the other correspondences or, or that one?
Who? I know.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve this, uh. Move to approve this, uh, geez, sorry, uh, hold on. Somebody's got a um move to accept correspondence as A through F as shown.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Alright, roll call, Lindsay?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Uh, next item, I believe, is the acceptance of minutes.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as shown, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you. And roll call, Chris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, uh, town administrator report?
Yep.
Um. Unfortunately, I can't give Steve Silverstein a hard time in every department if he for not telling me when the bagel tables get open, because now it is, um. Don't think, um. Um, it is very exciting and uh. And I'm just, I'm, I'm happy for them, the owners and the employees, it's, it's. And I talked to some of the instances in the area, they're also very, like, it's great to have that, that corner um filled with them. And then um, I was really excited to support uh cultural council and artists. And uh, a number of Makaties that showed up today um for the art installation and sort of demonstration. That, that cultural council has already done, having the arts installed here in town hall. Which is, which is wonderful, and individually, it primarily does certain employees, because we don't get a lot of people to come to these. But uh, for, for those people, not in the hallway, but on the other end of the hallway, um, they, they get to look at beautiful art every day. And I very much appreciate all the hard work, um, that, again, the um cultural council, but particularly the artists, that, that is their. You know, blood, sweat and tears on, on, on the wall, um, across from the Treasury Office the next morning, I very much appreciate it. And, and the, and the little, and the little reception today, it's great. Then um. Tomorrow I plan on uh attending a, a visit by District Attorney Ryan at Boys and Girls Club, I think she's been a number of years, I very much appreciate her. Her um, her presence, uh, Assistant Town Administrator Stephanie Dougan and I are planning on attending the Massachusetts Festival. Massachusetts National Management Association, M M M A, um, summer conference, that's the managers, first day. And uh, resident, um, little baby Flannery, um, was born. Two or so weeks ago, a few weeks ago at this point, um. And um, so it's wonderful, it's very good, it's very exciting. And then um, I also really want to point out uh the hard work of the police department, um, and I like that they highlighted. That mental health commission Emily Black had received an award for all her, and recognition for all her hard work that she does for the community, that's wonderful. Also, I was very cool to see that um Otis is gonna start holding his weight around here. Um, Otis is our, is our dog, canine, um. He doesn't greet me, I don't know what he does around here, but he hasn't really proven his worth to me yet, so maybe do some tracking, track in school, we'll, we'll keep him. Well, we'll see. Anyways, uh, that's all I have unless there's questions for the board.
Me? Okay, alright. Thank you, Greg. Uh, Chair report, well, first of all, thank you for bearing with me on my first go around with this, I appreciate the, the support. Um, I too was uh able to be present at the um, the opening of the artwork today, and that, that was uh. Great to see, just indicative of, of the, the kind of involvement that our arts community gives us. Um, and that's it for me. Uh, any board members, I think, with some tribute, uh, Chris?
I went to Storyland.
Chris, you got any?
I said I went to Storyland. I was scouting the Storyland all few minutes. Kid, how to teach that kid, I taught the, I, actually, I taught Maynard's youngest, uh, youngest. Youngest driver away from, from Maynard today. Had the four-year-old driving the boat. But no, nothing, nothing real important.
Okay, Lindsay?
Um, I'm just really excited for bagels, that's it. Just a second, ba- bagel table is open and congratulations to them, and I don't know if any of you had the chance to go. But on Saturday morning, the line was out the door. Um, and even still, I went in and placed, I don't know, at least like five sandwich orders and had children with me and was waiting. And I was in and out in under twenty minutes, so very excited for them and excited for the town.
Same, it was uh, Sunday was the same, I believe, then we're back, line was out the door.
I went on Sunday, but it was like twelve thirty and it was. Of course, I saw Senator Eldridge was there, makes the rounds, um, but it was still as good.
Yeah, I did make a point of going to the Bean today, just to make sure that they'll stay at some kind of uh custom.
I think they'll be fine, there's a little niche there.
Exactly, yeah. David, any?
Yeah, unfortunately, I misplaced an email that I wanted to um report to the board on, um. A resident reached out to me um. With her frustration over the fact that we don't have a newspaper in town, and she wanted to reflect the fact, and I wanted to have the names of these uh kids. Uh, she wanted to reflect that um, her son and another young man from Hudson. Are both, her son is a Maynard resident, of course, and he went to um. He went to Amsoh for high school, and is baseball player, and he and another young man from Hudson went. To school at um, um, what's the school in Beverly, um, um. College in Beverly, um.
Oh, and?
Anacot, they both went to Anacot and they play baseball at Anacot. And uh, both of these kids uh were part of the team, which went on to win the Division Three National Championship for. Baseball. And uh, both very successful, the young man from Maynard is a relief pitcher. And um, he and the young man from Hudson have signed to play uh. Whatever contracts they have with the Worcester Brave Hearts, which is a, it's a um. Development program for uh. College kids, they call it the Futures League, um. And they have a team that plays at Fitton Field and, and Polycross. Um, and they play a regular schedule, there's teams all around the area made up of kids throughout. The region that are uh up and coming college baseball players.
Something K P O B, so.
Sort of like K P O B, but a little less, uh, because those kids are.
Yeah, they're usually.
They're already, these kids are on the radar, but not totally on the radar, some of them, I think, are high school kids. But anyway, she wanted to point out that, you know, she wanted to get her kid's name known and the fact that these kids were successful as Maynard kid and. A Hudson kid, I told her I would bring the information, but unfortunately, I can't find in my panic. Can't find an email with the young man's name, if I have it the next time, I will let her know, but um, I guess. The message is that there are things happening with kids around town, even in a small town like ours, where kids are becoming successful in various activities and. And approaches, and it's not just necessarily Maynard, it could be an Amsoh kid, it could be a kid that goes to um. Aspen or a kid that homeschool, that goes to some other school, Maynard kids are out there and, and doing good things in the world. Uh, that should be.
For one, one direction sent them is to the Maynard advantage, I don't know how much of a readership do they get, but I read their report today and it's got some. You know, good, new features in it, so that's, that's one, one place to go.
Yes, and then lastly, did anybody notice the new format for the um, the Action Unlimited this past week?
Yes.
Yes, it's now like the Herald. Five pages, five pages instead of twenty-five pages, double the size. Well, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Second day? Uh, Lindsay?
Yes.
Yeah, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody.